All right, call to order and roll call please.
Edwards.
Here.
This is Eason.
Here.
Har.
Start.
Here.
You all rise, say the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its midst.
Thank you, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Would my senior, second by start, all is in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda as written?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, I had a question on the financial admin department, independent public advisors, quarterly retainer service, what do they do?
That's TIAA. These are, yeah, that's TIAA.
Okay.
And then that one cost that was under the water sewer that was, um...
Brown.
Was part of the V and K?
Yeah, um, are you talking about the, um...
Part of Intertech?
Oh, part of Intertech, yes.
That was they went out and did boring samples out at the potential new site, the equalization basin.
Was that going to do it one time?
Uh, depends if they have to do further ones to make sure they got a good soil strata out there. So that was the initial one. Uh, they had an initial quote from, uh, TerraCon that was twice that much and I asked them to go out and relook for quotes before they did something and ask them to do a back look, so... And any other questions? Hearing done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Now's the time to receive and file communications petitions or remonstrances. Valerie closes, submit a letter, everybody get that?
Yes.
I received a letter from Kirk Carr from Monkey This, I'd like to file and put down in. Did everybody receive the communication from the chief of police? So please have that filed and entered as well. Anybody get anything else? Seeing none? We'll move on to committee reports.
Uh, Public Works Committee met at six o'clock this evening to discuss the water, the meter pit installations as well as the water line and who is going to own what. I believe they are going to recommend counsel that the city claim ownership from the main to the city right of way and then the homeowner maintain ownership from the right of way to the home. And that'll be their first order of business to get that clarified and then we want to incorporate a policy...
Sorry.
On what meter pits will get done first as far as copper lines, galvanized, that'll be working with Craig on that one. So they have a little bit more work to do.
Great.
Any other committee reports? Seeing none, citizens input? Allen? Go ahead, give your name and address please for the record.
Alan Woodhouse, 1550 Orson Drive.
You?
Yeah.
Short statement here. Valerie?
I want to apologize for the comment that I made after the V and U board meeting. It was misunderstood and I'm very sorry that it occurred.
Thank you, Alan. Is there any other citizens input?
My man. Kirk Carr, 207 First Avenue, neighboring Serial Number, so it's good. And send a letter to each one of you individually with the purpose in mind not of recommending a course of action, but saying that I thought it would be most appropriate if you had a close meeting in which you could discuss the situation, um, because it is sensitive, because, um, it does reflect on all of us and because that is the appropriate venue in which to have a conversation like that. Unfortunately, we, we live in a time when news coverage of horrible things happening is not uncommon. And because of that, it changes, I think, the gravity of the situation and I, I hope you understand that I would respect if, if I was quite convinced you've thought through things as well as you could. That's all we can really ask of you, but I think it, again, would be appropriate if you took that step. So, thank you.
I'm Kirk. Anyone else? Nobody? All right, moving on. Old business, I need a motion to approve a resolution approving preliminary plat for the Mary Ingalls subdivision.
Motion.
Motion by Stark, second by senior, Cliff Note.
It was unanimously approved by planning and zoning, this is for the Iowa Brailly Site Safety School and after, if council approves this tonight, then we can start on, um, on talking with Hobart about an acquisition date for them and get this taken care of. So this is actually the next step in the process here.
Are they interested and excited about moving forward quickly, they know they had a project they were working on?
Yes, they are very excited, I actually, um, heard from them today, looks like we're going to be having a meeting on Tuesday of next week and looking to actually close hopefully the, maybe next, within the next two weeks here, or soon.
So this is the next step, it's getting that much closer to the final step?
Yes. Yes, Mr. Mayor. Want to know how big that step is and I'm halfway there. So, oh, it's going to be a big step, but it'll, it'll be, um, meeting with myself, Melissa Shuan, Pat Bander, Dennis, Hobart's their attorney and also our attorney, Bob Johnston. So it's going to be quite a bit of, quite large meeting, but one that hopefully we'll be able to get last finished touches on everything. And we need one last thing for novation and we're just waiting for the paperwork from the state so we can sign for the grant and the award. And that's the last step they need for their novation to take over the IVSSS contract, the contract for AmeriCorps, that is.
It still is going to come back to us at some point to, to say, yep, we are willing and...
Yes.
Able and...
Mm-hmm.
To take this over and here's the plan and...
That's what, that's what all these discussions are, in order for it to actually go through, council still needs to decide yes or no on it.
So it's, this whole conversation and everything that's going on over the next couple of weeks is still all going to be contingent on coming back and presenting what the plan is and how we're going to move forward and...
Yes, it all has to come back to council, everything does, so. Developers agreement, plat, everything.
In the essence of time when that stuff gets made?
Yes.
To move things along for all the other things that are hinging upon this?
Such as the dirt.
Such as the dirt, getting that approved, is this something that we probably consider having special meetings for to make sure that we can move this stuff along rather than waiting every two weeks to have that happen?
If it does come down to that, Mr. Mayor, I will know, have a better idea on Tuesday and after that I will let you know and then you can call a special meeting as needed.
Y'all just won't move in, we're going to get to know each other. Fine, you're dead here. Good enough. Uh, roll call?
Har. Say what?
Yes.
Eason?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes, is he yes?
Yep.
Edwards? Now, can I get a motion to approve a resolution for the splash pad bid?
Motion.
Motion by Stark, senior.
Matt?
Yeah.
Is he here?
No.
Matt's here.
Come on up!
We haven't been at more council meetings than...
Us do.
Yeah, I know. So this is a resolution to put forth in front of you guys for, uh, the approval of our bid, um, for Boomerang for the price of $222,000, which is going to be funded partially from the city funds and then also from the privately raised funds that we have from the Plaident project, so with the completion date of November of this year.
Bring your past. Once again, how big is that step? So...
Your side of town is going to be a happening place.
And it is. Yeah. A lot of things going on, or upcoming going on. Yes.
Is there any other questions for Matt? Any questions on the splash pad bid? Roll call?
Eason?
Yes.
Har?
Yeah.
Edwards?
Yep.
Stark?
Yes, is he yes?
Yep.
My kids are stoked. Not as stoked as I am, so, no problem. Thank you again to the councilors and the people who helped with everything and your cooperation with all this, so we're very, very excited, this would be a great addition to the community, so.
Thanks for persevering.
All right, now I need a motion to approve resolutions for the Fair Graham services.
Yes.
My caller, second by senior.
Streets.
Go ahead.
This is, this is for Fair Graham to do the actual engineering, um, and project management for your upcoming street projects that council said to move forward with for $3 million altogether. This is all part of that, so. And we have a meeting on Monday night, I believe, it's been mailed out to property, to property owners or residents in that area to actually have a meeting with Fair Graham at six o'clock P.M.
I would encourage all the council members available to come attend that, Cindy, would you please get that posted that probably have a bunch of council members possibly in the same spot?
Well, it's already, it's on the board.
Good enough, that's all I'm asking.
It's already posted.
Six, did you say?
Six o'clock, yes.
And this is the meeting where we're getting community input?
Yes.
From those in, in that area?
Correct.
That are having street projects done, as far as any thoughts or suggestions that we need to think about as we make the plans?
Such as like garbage pickup, um, entry exits, those types of things.
Any other questions? Roll call?
Stark?
Yes.
Har?
Yeah.
Is he yes?
Yep.
Edwards?
Yes.
All righty, now I need a motion to approve the resolution to amend the lease agreement with the US COC. My husband, second by senior. Chris?
This is a lease for upgrading, um, US cellular equipment on top of the water tower and they, in order just to change cable and change some of their hardware out, not going to have any effect on the operation of the water tower or any other size changes, but I would admit that the lease is needed because it's the actual change of equipment.
So when does the actual lease expire, if you can renegotiate the terms? Because I didn't see anything around here where it actually expires. We keep making amendments to it.
I feel like it's been since Christmas, don't you?
Well, this is the second amendment that was done since I've been here, the second upgrade.
It just says when the lease was dated, but not when they expire, I guess.
That, I, I do not have an answer for you, but I will have an answer for you, I can find out.
Because I think part of this original lease wasn't that they put the safety rail up on the east tower and that was part of the compensation for doing such? But I just hate to see that it was open ended if they get to use it for free forever.
No, there, I don't believe it's free, I believe there is an actual rent that comes off of it. Yeah.
I just can't see that anywhere.
Yeah, we, we get, we get paid for it. Yeah, we do.
Just not good at the thing, so...
Not in the amendment, no.
Yeah, I'd like to make sure that that's still going to be covered and not going to change anything.
Oh, no, that portion is not changing at all.
Lovely. Any questions? Roll call?
Edwards?
Yes.
Eason?
Yeah.
Is he yes?
Yep.
Stark?
Yes.
Har?
Perfect. Now a little discussion on the 20AD HIS safety staff. Tom, I think this one you're up.
Thanks for coming. Okay, I don't know what the hell you've got in your packet, you've probably got the initial safety and health management service letter, basically tell them what they're trying to do. I got a sheet in here that lists the services that we get now with the current training program. And it covers six items that are kind of basic, uh, they come once a month probably and, uh, sometimes they come here, sometimes they come around, surround communities. So it's kind of hit and miss whether you have people that have the time to go to them. So what they're trying to do is get a program where we would get a designated safety professional assigned to, we have 11 cities in our group, we're the biggest dog in the group, uh, it's Brooklyn, Izer, Garland, Gladbrook Hudson, Laporte, Monazuma, Ryanbeck, Chelsburg and Trey are, are the other 10, everybody's paying so much base and then they, they're trying to prorate this thing based on the number of employees. We probably have the largest, um, group of employees in this. And it's not necessarily a insignificant amount, it's, I think right now, uh, I'm assuming you guys are paying the same thing that the electrics pay, we're paying currently 49, 42 a year, or just under 10,000 for a community as a whole. And this would go up to, uh, on this estimate, uh, just under 27,000, so it's a jump, but you're actually getting a full-time person that's going to be able to be here and customize, uh, health and safety, so there's, there's 15 things on this one sheet that we don't get now unless we pay for extra, that would be part of this, new services. Then they have a few others listed at the bottom that, uh, aren't applicable, but they're going to cover them under the services, so this is about as good as you're going to get to having your, a full-time professional, although it won't be full-time just for us, it'll be for this group, but I would imagine, uh, we probably have the, uh, the largest amount, um, I'm sure we got the largest generation part in this, uh, group, so, uh, they're doing this all over the state, I can't remember how many groups they got, I think they've got one or two that have already approved going forward with this concept. And, uh, I introduced it to the board two months ago probably and they, they wanted to get some more information and that's why, uh, I wanted to make sure the city was on board if we were going to go ahead with this. Firstly, before I came, there was, uh, three incident reports written, one was in 2013, 2014, 2015, and they were all problems with the, uh, Lyman group, uh, our class and shocks. The last one, we were probably lucky that, uh, the individual wasn't killed and, uh, so, you know, this is going to be a program that's going to hopefully keep everybody safe and, uh, and do programs that need to be done, I don't have time to do all this stuff for a full-time safety person and, and Chris doesn't have time to do it either, so we're basically hiring a professional, uh, and as a group, so. It's, it's really just, uh, beefing up safety and health, which, uh, you know, you can't put Christ on that if somebody gets killed, that's nothing.
Are there other services, other companies that do this as well that you look into?
No, we didn't look into that, I mean, this is something new because, uh, I have Associates Municipal Utilities is, is doing this for the entire state, in fact, they do it for cities that aren't municipal, uh, utilities. So they've already got professionals, they might have two or three working in Des Moines already and that's just for, you know, the employers in that town that need that, that can't afford, I mean, the only, the only municipal I know for sure that has a full-time working person is CFU and, uh, you know, they got 40,000 people in that town and, and that person does work with IMU, he, he probably helps them do stuff besides taking care of CFU's problems. And I don't know about Ames or Muscatine, they may have something similar to that as well, we can't really afford to have a full-time person ourselves, so this is a way of getting access to the quality of person that you would want to have.
So this is, is this just for the VMU or does it...
No, this is for the access. Because when we do our safety trainings, um, it is both us as a city and the utility, we both do them together here.
And they cover, they cover more than just the electric stuff, I mean, they got health and safety, uh, uh, you know...
More pathogens, the usual...
Respirators, the whole thing, I know they, they cover digging and trenching and, uh, stuff like that, stuff that, uh, some of my guys would benefit a whole lot from, but, you know, if they want to participate together.
Are these other 10 cities on board?
I think some more, I haven't, I, I haven't seen whether the rest of them have passed it yet, I, I got a feeling none of them are going to pass it unless we pass it, it's, uh, we're, you know, the largest component of that. And that's, that number they came up with was supposed to be the salary, the benefits and anything else they were going to be covering and I think, you know, they've got an escalator and there as years go on for this person and they don't have them hired yet, they're going to have to go out and find these people and probably steal them from other safety companies that, uh, maybe have them, they may not, they may not find them in the state of Iowa, I don't know.
So would this person, if, if we agree and let's say all of the other 10 cities agree, would they be full-time here or would they just be here once in a while inspecting things?
Well, I think they're going to expect them to live in one of these 11 towns.
Okay.
And, uh, you know, they could be living in Vinton, they may not be, depends on, uh, what they want for housing.
But they're not going to have an office in Des Moines and just come up here and run it?
No, they're going to be here.
Yeah, they'll be spending a lot of the time, like I said, we probably have more going on than some of these other towns.
Yeah, I'm sure.
And it's not to say that, you know, they want to come here or we, we can still rotate where we meet for stuff, but they're going to come on board and they're going to personalize the safety programs for our city, for what we have that maybe nobody else has that need for, so, I mean, I could go out and, I'd have to hire a consultant if I wanted to do a lot of this stuff and...
Would, how much would the total in the last column, would it change for Vinton at all if, let's say, half of those other towns don't come on board, do we pick up more?
Well, I don't know, that, that, I didn't even ask that question.
Oh, well, that's an important question.
I'm, I'm just assuming that we won't do this unless everybody's on board.
Okay.
That's what I asked Scott at the last meeting, I said, what do you use now and he says I use HIS. So how much money do we have in our budget that he's already paying for HIS?
It's like 4,900?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's 4,000.
It's under 5,000 and we're spending 5,000, so we got 10,000 from the city going into this now, so we're going to pick up another 17,000 to make it full-time.
If you're wanting to partner with the city and the VMU, how, how do you see that being split?
Well, we can prorate it based on, uh, employees, I suppose.
Well, I don't know, I just...
Right now, we're paying 50/50, I think is how it's been done.
Right, that's how we're doing it.
Yeah. So as these things, any retraction excavation, everything else, don't you think that your employees should not opt out of those things?
They should be exposed to all of it.
They should be attending all of it, not just...
They got blood, one pathogens, they got stuff that applies to, no matter what your job is.
And I think that our guys should, the street department, for say, and the super guys should attend even yours that are being more specific to electrically directed because...
They do.
They might be coming up on a situation that unfortunately happened to one of my first, I don't know, actually two of us, so two of those incidents and I didn't, you know, I'm critically concerned, I don't want anything like that to happen again.
Yeah, well, if you have a pole down or transfer line's down, you, you know, everybody needs to know.
Oh, exactly, that's why, that should be an option if they want to attend it.
No.
No, they, we, we tell them, they got to attend it, so...
But this is going to cover a lot more than what the current HIS does.
And you said these people will develop a...
Customize.
City-specific safety program?
Yeah, they have customized written safety programs and annual review, that'll just be for Vinton and for each department within Vinton, I mean, everybody's going to have their own requirements.
Is that going to conflict with any of the union agreements on their safety stuff or are they going to have to work through that with them as well?
They'll work, they, I, they're going to have to work through that.
So will this actually include the police department as well? Will they be, because they were probably getting responded more to these things, if there's an electrical line down, they're going to go and be part of that as well?
There's no reason why they probably can't include them.
But like I said, if we're going to be C together, then we all should be benefiting from the safety aspects of it all.
I agree.
That's just my opinion, so...
I mean, I, I can't push this through without you guys be a part of it. I think it's something we ought to pursue because we're never going to be able to improve from where we're at right now with the way we're going.
Is it reasonable to assume that because we have the largest population and probably the largest number of employees, they're also going to be spending the largest amount of time here?
Well, I would expect we're going to have to spend more time here because we have more programs they're going to have to do than, they may be doing the same program for, say, Trey or whatever, but it may not be as extensive, I think they could come here and do ours and it would probably be applicable to all the rest at some level, but ours would probably, I would assume we would have the most complex and, uh...
Yes.
The one that they could use as the model for the, the rest of the town.
Except for Monazuma, because I think they cover their own gas.
Oh, I've been there before on the gas, so...
They do whatever.
They don't cover gas, I mean, that's a Lions problem.
Uh, not Monazuma, they actually own their own gas.
And so they'll have a special meeting?
Yeah, that's, but, um...
That's not to say our guys won't benefit if they run into a gas problem.
I would hope that the council would be in favor of pursuing this, but I do think they want to know how many of these other people and what those costs would change if they aren't, or, I don't know, since everybody's on the same budget time, if we can make phone calls to the other administrators or city clerks and see if that's been addressed on their budgets and if they're actually considering it, so we kind of have a more...
We could get a update from IMU, find out if any of these have already approved and they may be waiting on us, I don't know.
Yeah, that'd be nice to know, so...
Yeah, because then we'll need to figure out if, let's say, 50% of the other towns don't want to participate, will HIS still be interested?
Well, we'd have to probably talk to IMU and see if we can do HIS and maybe modify it to more than what HIS provides.
Or we have to pay more?
Right.
Unless participants more than...
We pick up a sculptive, the HIS isn't picking up right now.
Or maybe in somebody else's region and if nobody else participates...
They could combine us with another group potentially, I suppose, you know, I think they were doing like 13 or something in the state, it was quite a few and I think, the only one I can remember was up in northwest Iowa, they went ahead with it already.
So you all get a hold of...
Yeah, if you got a specific question, go ahead, give me...
Just now on Mainway though, that's my biggest one, find out how many people are actually considering participating? I think you've answered everything else, so, at least mine, so...
I think it would definitely give us a chance to improve from where we're at now.
Anybody have any other questions? Thanks, Tom. Moving on to new business, need motion to approve a resolution to transfer funds for the Harold Fund of the Airport Fund. My caller, second by senior.
This is just our normal annual.
Normal annual.
Har, what will you put in the budget for? After more, nothing less. After more, nothing less.
Anybody got any questions on that? Roll call.
Stark?
Yes.
Par?
Yeah.
Senior?
Yep.
Edwards?
Yep.
Hessen?
Yep.
Need motion to approve a resolution to transfer funds from the general fund to the library fund.
So moved.
My par, same answer?
Yes, and senior will be half.
Is it the quarterly?
Quarterly transfer. Okay. Roll call, please.
Edwards?
Yep.
Hessen?
Yep.
Senior? Stark?
Yes.
Par?
Yeah.
All right, I need a motion to approve a resolution to transfer funds from the loss funds to the library fund. Was my Stark, second my par, just their allocation of loss funds.
Allocation of loss sales tax.
Any other questions? Same none, roll call.
Par?
Yeah.
Stark?
Yes.
Hessen?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yep.
The senior?
Yep.
I need motion to approve a resolution to transfer funds from the landfill fund to the general fund.
So moved.
My par, senior?
Same answer.
So?
I got a question.
I got two too.
So, I'm just curious, is this in addition to, or is this so that we can pay J and R? Is this?
This is into the general fund. It's just gonna offset costs for processing utility bills, which landfill isn't a utility building, but it's just a once-a-year.
So money goes into this fund?
To help manage the...
By, it goes into the fund from where, when?
We collect it from utility bills into fund one seventy, and one seventy gives it back to general, or gives it to the general.
So the garbage is all handled here with, on our utility billing, so we can get some of the questions answered and some of the issues resolved and handle that in-house. So J and R can just concentrate on just picking up the garbage and take it into the landfill.
So this is money that is being collected on utility bills that isn't being paid to J and R?
Right, it's our...
For administrative?
For administrative fee.
Correct. We pay J and R out of this landfill fund.
Yes, we do.
Right, you saw that on your financials.
So, the landfill commission, I assume they've just met here Tuesday, Wednesday?
Okay.
Yesterday. I heard there might be a reduction in rates.
I heard it officially followed me.
Yeah. Maybe we should have the chairman of the landfill commission come give us a report sometime.
Okay, I could invite Mr. Watson.
Thank you. Kinda give us an update where they're standing. I heard they're actually sitting pretty good, so I could think about reducing rates. So I'd like to know if that's actually gonna happen, so.
I think he always pushes for that.
He does, he does always have that.
Well, I talked to somebody else from one of the other communities yesterday, and they said the same thing. So just like to know if it's gospel or just hearsay. Anyhow, moving on, any other questions about that transfer? Roll call.
Stark?
Yes.
Par?
Yeah.
The senior?
Yep.
Edwards?
Yep.
Hessen?
Yes.
All right, need motion to set the public hearing for budget amendment for FY ending June thirty, twenty twenty, for February thirteenth.
So moved.
Second?
My par, second my Stark?
This is primarily the communications budget utility by the project.
Go ahead.
Even though we're not in charge of it, it still is on our budget.
So if we're doing the transfer, how's that gonna get reimbursed? Is that part of their loan, or is that just strictly for us?
No, 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 it just shows up on our, in our budget, but we have no say-so over it. It's just for their reimbursement from the bond money to pay for the project, the in-and-out for that, that's all.
So we're just being a pass-through?
Correct.
And any other questions on that? Roll call.
Yeah, roll call.
Well, make it one. That's kinda hard, I'd like...
The senior?
Yeah.
Edwards?
Yep.
Hessen?
Yeah.
Stark?
Yes.
Par?
Yeah.
Bird?
I need motion to set a date for a public hearing for the maximum property tax dollars.
Also for February thirteenth.
Go over February thirteenth?
So moved.
Hessen and senior?
This is the new truth in taxation hearing, as they're calling it from the state of Iowa.
So this is that one we discussed, that certain numbers have to be accounted for at this truth in taxation hearing?
Correct.
To be published?
Prior.
Prior.
If you don't have this hearing, then you're not able to go forward with your budget at all. But what this actually excludes is the emergency levy at debt service.
So to be fair, the number that will be posted in the paper is not the final number that it will be.
That is absolutely correct, Mr. Mayor. But it's still called the truth in taxation. I did not make this up.
You just can't make that crap up.
No, I remember dealing with it twenty years ago, but that's...
All righty, any questions on that? All as a favor?
Aye.
Reports? Mr. Warren?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I received a letter yesterday from Congresswoman Finkenhour asking us if we have any transportation and infrastructure projects on the federal side, roads, bridges, transit systems, anything. They would like some input for their online submission process, priorities by February fifth, so. I'll respond back. Only thing I can think of is maybe sidewalks or some kind of secondary transportation, more money for sidewalks on two eighteen, because that would be a federal-type project running through town.
We don't have any federal bridges or anything like that qualified for federal money for our bridges?
Just the little bridge on two eighteen, but it would be a pass-through through the state of Iowa. So it would come as a block grant from the state and then from the federal government that's given to the state, just like our STP funds. So our STP funds that we do, like we did for Third Street, it's for those type of transportation dollars. So it could be some bridges, but it would be primarily Third and Fourth, but it's not enough traffic for thirteenth. If then we get some traffic counters, yet.
There was always talk of a walking bridge along two eighteen.
Correct. And that's what I was, that's what I was going to submit as just a proposed idea to the Congresswoman's office. If that's okay, or consensus with council to do so.
Can you only do one?
No, it could be more than one. So if you have ideas, please let me know before February fifth.
I would say that is any current bridge that we have that needs repairs or, I mean, that's...
Keeping America off the highway is a big one.
That would be good, and have it more pedestrian-friendly.
Yeah. Perhaps maybe the future trail that's gonna go across to the wetland might be another opportunity for something.
Yes, and that would be along two eighteen as well, which is also federal, because it's US Highway two eighteen. It's also alternative, I think, to Interstate three eighty, if anything happens.
I believe it is.
Yeah.
So.
And we have our meeting on Wednesday coming up, a union meeting?
Right. What time is that?
Six o'clock.
Next Wednesday, right?
Yep, next Wednesday. And that's all I had, other than Monday's meeting.
That's just us, though, right? So that'll be a short meeting?
No, that's what they're gonna have.
Oh, the rep will be here too?
Yeah, it's full bore.
Okay.
So, get to negotiating that one.
I know, it's gotten developed, it's good to know, too.
Perfect. Should let me know when I change the version.
That's right.
All righty. Chief, you got anything?
Uh, well, finally I got word that our new vehicle is in, a young unit.
Three years later, two?
Yeah, something like that, pretty close. But we'll take possession of that this next week. Myself, City Administrator Ward, representative from, I believe, Willis Navy Homeless Services, met and we looked at the Don Martin Storm Shelter, the structure above it. It's just an empty vacant building.
It's not even used once a year, if we're lucky.
And they're looking at, possibly looking at that for a site for a homeless shelter. I don't know if anybody realizes, we do have a handful of homeless people in town through the winter, through the summer. We have a lot of issues with, I shouldn't say a lot, we've had some issues with homeless people sleeping in the Hardwicks bathrooms, sometimes damaging property inside as well. But Willis Navy is, they're really wanting, from my understanding, they really want in the city of Vinton to provide the service. The services, if they were to establish here, facility would be open seven PM to seven AM. And once seven AM comes out, comes around, everybody's gotta exit the property. Facility would be locked until seven PM. So those individuals that would, that would use that facility would hopefully get a, some sort of a transportation program that possibly would show them to, like, the rabbits, so they can, or if they had a job somewhere, they can plan some transportation there to their employment.
I think they're coming to the next meeting to discuss, or at least have a proposal to council. Presentation to council.
But they've really jumped ahead on planning, just so you know. They've had McDowell give them a proposal on a remodel of that facility.
And we're, I'm like, whoa, before you do that, please come to talk to council.
But I just wanted to give you a heads up on what's coming up and what they're gonna push on.
So do you share that with the neighborhood first?
Yeah, that's something that was discussed. They're gonna have to really work on public relations and getting that information out.
And they, I assume, would provide supervisor of some sort to make sure the door's unlocked and nothing's going on that shouldn't be, and then...
Not to take any thunder from them coming in and giving a presentation, but the way this would work is that there'd be no city monies. Is that correct, Chris?
That's right. We wouldn't have to pay for that at all.
So they'll be here next meeting?
Been planning on it, yes.
Okay.
Need further?
Pardon me?
Sounds like a need further.
Well, like I said, I don't know if everybody realizes, but we do have a hand in the population during the winter and inside.
Anything else?
That's it.
Cindy?
We did receive our insurance money from EMC for the water tower vandalism already. And this, this evening, we'll have to be looking for a new maintenance person.
No. What?
He'll stay on until we get a replacement, but it's, his schedule, other things are going on after his regular job that he can't, he doesn't feel he has time to commit. So he'll stay until we get a replacement.
Well, that's too bad, he does a good job.
Yeah, I, yeah. And, you just comment how clean it's built.
Anything else? All right. I did have the opportunity to meet with Mr. Gill on that Saturday, right at nine AM, and he was there. I did get him to sign a little piece of paper that he received the stuff. It's kinda bad, 'cause the pens were frozen, 'cause it was kinda cold, but I have that. He was pretty understanding about whatever happened, wasn't upset at all, so he was fine.
But the calendar's still rolling up to his due date?
He understands that, so. I told him I would check in with him here before the end of the day is, and we'll go from there, so. Other than that, it is getting to the busy time of year for us and all the other meetings that go on throughout the county, so. If you don't get ahold of me right away, it's 'cause I'm out and about, so just keep trying.
Okay.
So, anything else? Any Good Welfare? Oh, hi, Tom.
Yeah, I guess I wanted everybody to know if they don't know. My line foreman Brad Stills having a severe family issue. His mill son, who's twelve years old, Brennan, has a rare form of brain cancer. And they're, they just started some new treatment today on drugs that have never been used before or approved. And he would, I'm sure, love to have your prayers while he's going through this. We were able to set up an account at the FSC Bank. If anybody wants to donate any money to the cause, they can do that there easy enough. And I think there's a Facebook page out there, and there's things going on, but...
I think there's a GoFundMe page out there.
Yeah, there is. Well, and some people would rather not do the GoFundMe because of the extra fees, so they go to the bank and get rid of all that, so. It's available, but I think, you know, just pray for his family, all of them. He's been missing a lot of work, and I told him not to worry about it, take care of his family, so.
Yeah, anybody who knows Brian and Christine, they're really good people. I don't wish that on anybody, and it's a horrible thing. I hope they pull through, so. I don't know if I wanna try Good Welfare after that, so with that, I'll ask for a motion for adjournment.
Wait, I would like to ask special government to meet at six-thirty on the thirteenth. That would be to go over our policy to the point that we're working on and our ordinances that direct how we conduct meeting.
Oh, you're talking about the resolution?
Yes.
The resolution?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, I think six-thirty will give us plenty of time.
Now I'll take a motion for adjournment. Motion, second. Senior? All as a favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.